It's good to see everybody, and if you would please remember to silence your electronic devices. Turn off those storm alerts. I had to turn those off on my phone because it comes, even if you turn it on silence, I realize that it tells me every time there's a tornado warning. So if you would, please stand and join me in the invocation and the Lord, we pray tonight for those who lost their lives or property during Hurricane Debbie. May the families of those lost feel your comfort and the support of the community. May those whose property was destroyed find help and hope as they rebuild. We pray also for the family of Lake County Master Deputy Bradley Link, who was fatally shot over the weekend, and his two partners who were seriously wounded. Grant them peace during their time of grief and recovery. We ask your guidance on our meeting tonight. Give us wisdom and compassion as we strive to make the best decisions for all members of our community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I guess I failed to formally call the meeting to order, so if you haven't figured out, we are in session. So as most of you probably know by now, we have a fairly recent tradition where we begin each meeting with a fun or interesting fact about our city or the region. We rotate that duty every meeting, and tonight that falls on me, although we had a little debate over that, and they all voted that it was my turn. So I did come prepared. This is kind of both an interesting fact and a call for information, because I don't know everything there is to know about this, and I'm hoping that some of the folks who have lived a long time in Temple Terrace may be able to fill in some of the blanks here. Hint, Mr. Chambers?
Yeah, I know. We'll see.
So there's been a variety of, I guess, to set the stage here, so make, build up the drama, right? There's been a variety of newspapers over the years, and during the 1940s, there was one of them called The Sentinel, and it published from 1940 to 1946, and it was published by a fellow named John Perry, who I don't know very much about, but I'm trying to find out more. That's question number one for anybody who knows. So Mr. Perry was very vocal in his editorials. He was very passionate about the city and not always complimentary of the three city commissioners. There were three back then. And at periods of time when he didn't think things were going quite right, he was pretty vocal in his newspaper about what needed to happen and why they weren't doing well and that kind of thing. So this is an article, not critical, but we'll come back to John Perry probably in future meetings, but this one's not critical. This is from September 19th, 1945, right? So place, imagine the time World War II just ended, right? We're getting back to normal. This is an editorial by John Perry in The Sentinel that says, I won't read the whole thing, but today is a big step in the right direction for the development of Temple Terrace. Today, a big step in the right direction for the development of Temple Terrace is made by the Temple Terrace Boys in a Cub Airplane. For the past three afternoons, as soon as they got home from school, these boys have been preparing a landing strip in Temple Terrace for light airplanes. Today, the first airplane landed on Temple Terrace's own airport. It landed, took off, landed, and took off again. The first step in the future development of Temple Terrace has begun. The onlookers, to onlookers, the sight of planes flying around may have been a bit misleading. These planes were not stunting or buzzing, but making preparatory runs over the strip, a procedure made by pilots when landing on a new field. They were competent pilots who knew their business well. We understand the Temple Terrace Civic Association is most anxious to do all it can for the development of Temple Terrace. Here is its big chance. Just think what it would mean for our city to have an airport of its own. Air-conscious Tampa residents will fly out to play golf, swim, or visit friends at the Florida Christian College. Temple Terrace Boys, as well as some adults, will be wanting to fly. It would provide speedy transportation to the hospital on Davis Island in case any of any severe sickness in the Terrace. Right? It would put Temple Terrace on the map. This is no kid's scheme. These boys mean business. Our city commissioners and the civic association should back them all the way. Interesting side note here, one of the things that Mr. Perry is critical of and some other stuff I'll talk about is that the city commissioners are failing to do their job. The city government is not doing anything, therefore, they founded the civic association, which is basically functioning as the city government and doing things that the commissioners, they didn't feel were doing. I've put the plans for an airport suitable to a community our size, which is to put out, which is put out by Piper Aircraft. It shows how easy and cheaply a strip for light planes can be built. These small planes do not require a hard surface runway. A sod strip is plenty sufficient. However, question, however, the present strip is the asphalt road leading from hole number 13 to the garbage dump. Now, I know where the garbage dump was. That's where the family rec center is, but I don't have any idea where hole 13 is, and I don't know what road would have been the paved road.
Gillette, dead ends into Druid, right at 13.
So it would have been Gillette up?
Up Gillette to probably where White Way is.
Yeah, okay. All right. So if you live on Gillette, you used to live on, you lived on what was a runway for at least a day or two. Planes take off and land away from Temple Terrace houses, so there's no possibility of danger. Civil aeronautics authority requires that a pattern must be flown before landing and after, and after takeoff. It would not be necessary for planes to fly over houses, so that gives you some idea there were no houses in that area. The plane will land again Friday afternoon sometime after 5:30 PM. The Sentinel urges all interested citizens to be out at the strip and see what improvements need to be made. Come and see what these boys have been working for. We need your support. Let's make Friday a day to remember in Temple Terrace history. I guess they succeeded. We're talking about this. Here is our big chance to put Temple Terrace forward. Think this over. You cannot help but see the advantages to an airport in Temple Terrace. It's not often that I ask Sentinel readers to do something. That, by the way, is not really true. But this is one time I do wish you would turn out and see what an airport has to offer. There is no need for a cross-strip. If the present site is not desirable, maybe our good friend, Mr. Herb, will donate enough land for strips, or maybe the civil civic association could buy it from him. John Eric, John Perry editor. So interesting. He was, like I mentioned, kind of, there's some other ones that I wanted to read. He gets inflamed at election time about who, who you should vote for and why, and very critical of some of the commissioners at the time. And I'm a little hesitant because I don't know if these people have descendants that are still here, but anyhow, I didn't know exactly where the paved road that went to the garbage dump was, but I guess it's Gillette. So I also found another interesting one. I don't know why I thought of you with this, but where they directed the city manager every day to, after they dumped the garbage, to douse it with kerosene and burn it. So that, and the idea was, you know what the idea was? To prevent the spread of polio. That was the, so they burned the garbage under the swimming pool. So then there's ashes in there, I guess. So anyhow, I don't know if that was fun or interesting, but to me it was. So thank you very much. So our first item of business is appointment to the school support committee. We have two regular member appointments. There are two regular member vacancies on the school support committee. The city received three applications from Giancarlo DeSalvo, Tom Mortensen, and Laura Sibella. Giancarlo DeSalvo has been employed by the Hillsborough County Schools for nine years. Tom Morton, Mortensen has served on many city and county boards for many, many years. Laura Sibella is an associate professor of education at USF. Are any of them here?
I'm Giancarlo.
Why, do you like to say a few words, or it's up to you?
I have questions. I would mind answering them. I didn't have a prepared speech.
Okay.
If you would prefer me to speak, I can, but you said, well.
Okay. Are there questions? Would you like to have him approach? Okay. Any other? I don't see any. Okay. So we do have ballots, and we are appointing two, correct? Two. So one of these folks do not vote for three of them, okay? So if you would, please cast your ballot, sign them, and pass them to our left. To our deputy city clerk. Thank you. Now, while she tabulates that, we can talk about John Perry. I did not find much yet about John Perry, but I did hear that, that there's a historic home that just came on the market for sale on Willow Wick. You might have read about that, and that supposedly is his childhood home where he grew up. So I don't know where he lived after that as an adult, but more to come. We'll find out. I thought you were working at the rec center in 1945.
That's funny.
Yes, ma'am.
I've got four votes for DeSalvo, one vote for Mortensen, and five votes for Sibella.
So is there a motion to appoint Mr. DeSalvo and Ms. Sibella to the school support committee for a term extending from August 17th, 2024 to August 17th, 2027?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays. Thank you very much. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Mr. Mortensen, if you're watching, thank you for your application as well, and there's only so many appoint, there's so many slots on each of these committees, so it's unfortunate that sometimes we don't have enough to appoint everybody who applied. So, okay, has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from our meetings of July 16th, 2024, and July 30th, 2024. That was our special city council meeting.
Move to approve both sets of minutes.
Second.
Motion to second. Corrections, discussion of the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays. The minutes are adopted. Next is section of the meeting where we hear from persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. For those of you who might not know it, there are forms in the back of the room if you wish to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda. I currently have one request to speak from Mr. Loeb. Good evening, sir.
My challenge tonight. My name is Charles Loeb. I live in Terrace Park, and I want to make several announcements first and foremost, that I gave Councilman Chambers what I promised in that picture of the universe. Second, that on Friday, September 20th, 2024, is going to be the Lightfoot Program for Seniors. Thirdly, I want to remind people that school will be opening on Monday, and that's the sales tax holiday before I get into anything else. I wanted to, among, now among the regular stuff, I wanted to talk about a brief discussion about the library sale. It went over $1,400, and I think they seemed pretty good. They seemed very happy about that. It's because, but I think the publicity had a lot to do with it. What I was also told was that the donations were greater, too. They said it was extremely busy, particularly on Thursday. I went there Friday morning. So I did want to mention that. My guess, and I'm just saying my guess, they only do this three times a year. My guess is that the next one will be the weekend before Thanksgiving, which is November 21st to Saturday, November 23rd. I was reading online that, my next topic is I was reading online that FDOT is having a study for 56th Street between Fletcher Avenue all the way down to 50th over down to the Expressway. And of course, that includes Temple Terrace. I remember that you all got FDOT over here back in April. I think it was April 2nd. I was kind of wondering if you could do that again to get them to talk to you about the 56th Street study publicly. I do have some things I'd like to discuss with them, and I also like a couple of things to discuss with you all relative to the 56th Street. So I did want to mention this. So, you know, realize, and if anybody doesn't realize it, that FDOT is doing a study currently on 56th Street as well. Finally, I want to take, I want to go back to the same year the mayor was talking about, a little earlier in the year, January 30th, 1945. Now, I wonder what happened on that day? That has to do with the local area. This has to do with Bob Hope doing his radio show here back on that date, actually, more specifically in Drew Field in Tampa. His guest star was Edward G. Robinson, according to this book I picked up over, over at the library, actually, it's cassette tapes. And it says, and I think I still have enough time to read this, Edward G. Robinson tries to pursue the frugal Bob Hope to contribute 10 cents to the March Times, well, whilst President Roosevelt was still alive. French-language sings more and more, and skinny Ennis Crohn's, means my dreams are getting better all the time. And again, this was, of course, during World War II still. So it was very interesting to find this little piece of history for this area in this little book here that had to do. Great Big 20, this, this thing Hole said is 20 audio cassettes for 40 episodes. This was the only one in Tampa. So I guess, oh, a few seconds left, so I wish you all good evening, and again, good luck for the school year and all that, and to everybody and all that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb.
Point of order?
Yes.
Did we have two sets of minutes to approve? Did we skip one?
We did.
We did them both? I'm sorry. I must have blanked out when that happened.
Was that your intent? Did you have questions about either one of them?
I did not. No, sorry.
Okay, so we passed them. We adopted the minutes.
It's good with me. Sorry.
Okay, all right, good. I currently have no other request to address the council. Are there other members of the public who wish to, yes, sir, please? Could we ask you, after your remarks, to please fill out the form and give it to the city clerk so that we can have it in the minutes who you are?
Yes, sir. I just filled it out.
Okay. We just need you to begin with your name and city of residence, then.
Is it okay to pass, pass out these?
Sure.
My name is Billy Chapman, and that's my partner, Michael Hunter.
Thank you.
And we are the owners of Natural Born Leaders Academy. Natural Born Leaders Academy is a youth mentoring group designed for at-risk teens here in the city of Tampa, as well as Temple Terrace. You all have, may have, have, have seen us on ABC Action News, Fox News Nine, and Spectrum News Nine. Natural Born Leaders Academy is designed to cultivate the leaders within the young people. We specifically target at-risk teens, dropouts, children who've had troubled, troubled youth. The program is centered around motivation, inspiration, and positive affirmations. As many of you know, that a lot of the crime that takes place within our city may happen by fatherless youth. I'm also the school resource officer at Greco Middle School. I've been there for, on and off, for the past 10 years. Our program was in two different schools this year, Kimball Elementary School, as well as Greco Middle School. As you know, Kimball had to close, but our program was a great success. The district came out and looked at it. They liked what they saw. The reason that we are here today is to find out if the city of Temple Terrace has any grants that can help push our program further, further along. We do the program once a week while school is in session, and we would like to do it outside of the school as well, within the city of Temple Terrace. We also want to know if you all have a building available that we could use, or we could rent from you at a low cost to help conduct this program. Any questions?
No, sir, but we'll have a member, somebody from our staff contact you and have some discussions with you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council at this time? Okay, seeing none. Counsel, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays. Consent agenda is adopted. Next issue, next item on the agenda is a second public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1567, amending Chapter 12 of the code to change the terms of Board of Adjustment Members. I will open the public hearing and ask Deputy City Attorney Ernie Mueller to explain. Good evening.
Good evening, counsel, mayor. As the mayor said, I'm here for second reading to the ordinance that'll make changes to the term length for the Board of Adjustment Members. If you recall, it's to move it from, or change it from being two-year terms to up to three-year terms. We did get through the city count, the city-county planning commission. They did find it consistent, so we are good there. And I'm just available for any questions if you have any.
Mr. Mueller. Okay, we're good. Is there, excuse me, are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the word. Nope, I don't need to do that. If the ordinance is acceptable, is there a motion to adopt ordinance 1567?
Move to approve ordinance 1567, amending Chapter 12 of the code to change the terms of Board Adjustment Members.
Second.
Motion in the second. Discussion of the motion. I only have one comment. I did go to the BOA and explain what we were doing. I did mention that we were going to poll them and ask if they, first step would be to see if they were volunteers that aligned with what we needed. You know, you take a two-year, you take a three-year. We are going to do that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays. Ordinance is adopted on second reading. Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Next is the first public hearing and first reading of ordinance 1568, enacting Article 4, Section 16-95 and 16-96, City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances prohibiting camping and sleeping on public right-ofways or property. I'll open the public hearing. Deputy City Attorney Ernie Mueller is back to explain this one.
Good evening, counsel and mayor. All right. For the past several months, the city's police department, the legal department, has sought to make some changes to Chapter 16 of the city code, which is entitled defenses. So this ordinance that's before you now is kind of the first step in making those changes. This ordinance is to prevent camping and sleeping on rights of way and public property. And as I'm sure you're aware, the state recently passed a law that goes into effect October 1st that prohibits cities and counties from allowing persons to camp or sleep on any public property, including public buildings, the associated grounds, and any public right-ofway. One of the provisions of that new law is that it will provide a cause of action for residents and business owners against the city if we do not prohibit the camping and sleeping on the right-ofway. So by enacting this ordinance, the police department will have a procedure to follow when encountering people that may be camping or sleeping on that, the public property or right-ofway. We were also waiting, of course, for the Supreme Court to make a decision in the Grants Pass versus Johnson case, which came down just recently, which they ruled that, that local governments can prevent people from sleeping on the right-ofway and the public property, including the unhoused.
Ernie, let me interrupt you. Is our microphone on?
Yeah, it has a light. Am I not?
It is, okay. Brian, I, I can see people in the gallery are having difficulty hearing, Ernie. I don't know if we have the capacity, the ability to turn the volume up.
I'm sure I can project.
I see a gentleman back there that's having trouble.
Okay. I'll try and be a little louder. And the ordinance that's being provided to you has been modeled after the city of Tampa's ordinance. And so by enacting this ordinance, the police department will be able to effectively enforce the provisions of the new state statute. And with that, both the chief and I are available for questions.
Very good. Thank you, chief. You see, you're approaching. Did you have, did you want to add to it, or, okay?
Stand for questions. The only thing that I would add.
Please approach. Good evening.
Mayor, city council, can I follow you, police chief? The only thing that I would add, I think it's important to, to understand that, that does not include, neither the statute or the ordinance does not include areas that are already permissible, permitted, for instance, by the city, and, and the statute itself specifically says what is and is not camping. So we're not, we're not looking to regulate people that are permitted here in the city to be someplace camping at one of our parks that is, that has already been addressed through the processes that we already have. And quite frankly, we are already dealing with our citizens that are, that are unhoused in situations where they are on private property. So really, my hope is that our citizenry will not see, and, and our unhoused members of the unhoused community that, that we service as well, will not feel anything any, any differently than what it is that we are, we are already doing now with respect to the private property issues. This just gives us, as a last resort, a, a means to effectively deal with what I, what I believe is going to be quite a few individuals that, that present no other alternative to us. With that, we'll stand for questions.
Thank you, chief. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this issue? Yes, sir, please approach. We just need your name and city of residence.
Joseph Stanko, and I'm at 6110 East 110th Ave. And I work with the homeless just personally and also with the, through the Corpus Christi, St. Vincent de Paul Food Pantry. We see a lot of them coming in on Saturday. We see a lot of them coming in on Saturday for provisions and things like that. And I heard this new ordinance coming down. Oh, I also do personal outreach on my own in various areas of the town. Right now, I'm concentrating more on Nebraska, Fowler, where there were a lot of homeless. And we see an increase in this among the, in our Temple Terrace area, too. I think we're seeing that. But my understanding was that enforcement and penalty was only in the case of if a municipality had a facility to send them to, and they did not choose to go, you know, that they then could be arrested. I don't know what the, if there's a consequence yet for that, if they don't move, Chief Albona, or...
Well, we'll...
Yeah, maybe, maybe. But I just thought that it's a major problem, like where do we send them? We move them on. City of Tampa moves them on quite a bit, you know? I'll go out and find them in parking lots one night, one Sunday, and then the next Sunday, you're hunting around for them, and they show up. And many of them have resources, but not enough to own a home or rent an apartment and things like that. And we do mainly the feeding operation. And when I think of this hurricane we just came through, three days of that incessant rain, how do people survive out there, you know? How do they survive? So I think in the long term, we have to think of some facility, some facility. And I know that Temple Terrace just went through a tremendous search for land for affordable housing, and it was kind of, I guess, disappointing that it's hard to find, and indeed. But it seemed like some kind of temporary facility, that there'd be a roof over there, like a pavilion, and bathrooms, things like that would be a great step forward. And I don't know what the other areas of the county are doing. Of course, Hillsborough County itself has a big program for housing, housing the homeless, you know?
Mr. Stanko, sorry, but I'm going to have to cut you off in a second because this is three minutes from when you started.
Oh, okay, alright, well, I just...
If you have a final comment or two, that'd be fine.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to say that we need alternatives, we need support, we need to support them in some way. But of course, I can see the objections of the businesses. So that's what I wanted to come out for, the homeless tonight, and I appreciate you listening.
Thank you, Mr. Stanko. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council on this topic? If not, council member, questions for Chief Albona or Mr. Mueller? Council member Fernandez?
So the question I have is not really, I don't know...
Microphone.
Oh.
It's on.
It's red.
I know, I see, it's on.
I don't know which one of you it was for, but every year at the Arts Festival and maybe a couple of other times during the year, the Boy Scouts camp at a couple of parks. Like one, they camp at the Art Festival to protect the art overnight. And that's, so that's why I'm asking is, what, would those activities still be allowable under this ordinance?
Article 4, Section 16-95A, except as may be specifically authorized by the city. Any of those type of events that was specifically authorized by the city would not fall under this.
Okay.
Council member?
This is for you, chief. Can you explain briefly, what's the process? Your officer comes up on somebody asleep on a bench in the, on city property. What would be the process with this new ordinance?
It would be no different. The process that we already have in place, our policies and procedures, this is not what that is. Our policies and procedures will be the same. When we have to make contact in those situations, the first thing we try to do is establish a rapport. We try to offer services. Oftentimes, we are successful. Services include what was mentioned by the citizen at the podium, talking about the things that the city of Tampa have, the county has. We have those listings. We have a specific unit that actually follows up, in addition to the initial contact with our homeless, and tries to provide them with a means through some of the services that we do have to get, you know, whatever they need. Sometimes it's a, it's an address that they need so they can have a place to get a check, and we work with them to do that. Sometimes it's a ID card that they need, and we work with them to accomplish that. We are not turning our backs on this problem, not at all. And I hope no one gets that thought in their head. We go out, in fact, quite frankly, Clue has built such a rapport with the homeless that we, sometimes we attract more of our homeless in our region because we do take the time. We do take them and transport them to places. We do provide a referral to St. Vincent de Paul and our local, our local community groups that provide those things, our churches that are, that have a means to provide additional assistance to them. The resource center we have on Fowler Avenue, all of that's going to continue to be in place. It's not going to be affected by this at all.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, council member Sisler?
Just clarifying, so this will have no impact on any private property? So people are sleeping in front of the, this is down by Caravus, for example? This will have no impact on anybody dealing with that?
We already deal with private property, yes, sir. No, this has nothing to do with private property.
Because that's, I've already had that question asked of me, you know?
Private property is controlled by the property owner, and we work with them. They often want to partner with us, and we become their agent in cases for trespassing and situations like that, where we are, in their absence, able to act upon their wishes. And so that's how you handle the private property type of situation.
Well, as I read, as I look at it, I'll give us a comment, I'll do it later. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Council member, Vice Mayor Abel?
Thank you for your explanation and your assurance that it's not really going to change current procedures, which are already very helpful to the homeless population. I've heard you say many times personally that homelessness is not a crime. And I appreciate hearing that, because sometimes, you know, with the language of these things, it sounds like it is. So I guess my question is, this ordinance, does it permit the police department to do anything different from what you're currently doing, and how will it affect your procedures, if at all?
This will allow, as a last result, as a resort, rather, an officer to address a situation where a member of the community who finds themselves homeless and unwilling to accept any of the other things I've explained that we have in place to try to assist them. It allows an officer to act much like we would on private property with a trespass program in place, and unfortunately, that could lead to an arrest. But that's not what we would lead with, and that would be made abundantly clear throughout the conversation, if it even began to look like that was going to be the outcome or alternative. Our goal is to be able to provide our homeless with alternatives, with resources that can help them. Some of them, it's, they only need a couple, two or three things, and they can begin to move forward. Others, and it's a limited few, but we've had situations where people would be laying across sidewalks and refusing any assistance. And without this, we have, we have no alternative after offering everything we can but to walk away. This will prevent that walking away. It will not be something, a lot of what we do in law enforcement, I mean, you apply the law, but it's not a black and white thing. I mean, it's situations and circumstances, and it takes that, that's why we have Clue, the community liaison unit that follows up on all of these contacts, and ensures that for those citizens that are willing to accept the opportunities of these resources, that we do everything we can to make sure that that happens for them. All this is going to do is allow us to, because of the new statute, we won't be in a situation where we have to just walk away, walking away now, because of what's been put in place and takes effect in October, puts us in a situation where, if I didn't bring this forward, I wouldn't be doing my job for you and having it, having created a mechanism so that we wouldn't find ourselves in that liable situation.
Understood. Thank you for that clarification.
A question for Mr. Mueller. All right, just a clarification, I know the answer to this question, but I want to make sure everybody else knows the answer to it. So the new state law that takes effect in October essentially prohibits local governments from turning a blind eye to this issue. So if people are encamped or sleeping on public rights-of-way or on public property, it's no longer going to be legal for a local government to just say, well, people sleep under that tree, and we know it, and we let them do it. Like some cities in other states, where they just have given up parks and said, well, that's where they, that's where they set up the tents. And they just cede the park to the homeless because that's where they are. This will demand that we not turn a blind eye to this, is that correct?
Correct. It's making, you know, it's going to force the city to take some sort of action.
Right, thank you. Other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve on first reading?
Read the ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry. No. Oh, yes. See, one time I go to do it and I'm wrong, and the next time I don't go to do it and I'm wrong again.
Why did I ask this?
Okay, if there are no other questions, council members, I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Sisler.
An ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, creating Article 4, Camping and Sleeping on Public Property and Rights-of-Way, under Chapter 16 of the City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances, creating Section 16-95, Camping Prohibited Exemptions, creating Section 19, correction, 1696, Sleeping in or on the Rights-of-Way, Providing for Applicability and Severability, Repealing All Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Herewith, Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, is there a motion?
To approve on first reading ordinance 1568, enacting Article 4, Section 16-95 and 1696, to Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances, with a second reading to be held, oh, 20th, August, I'm sorry, August 20th.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion of the motion? Not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No nays? Very good. The ordinance is adopted on first reading and will appear for second reading in public hearing on Tuesday, August 20, 2024. Council business, councilor, are there any, is there any over, is there any carryover council business from previous meetings? Okay, seeing none. New business in board reports? Any new business? Vice Mayor Abel?
I have something from the B-PAC. At our most recent Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee meeting, they passed a motion to, upon council approval, spend some of their funds. And I know that they have some discretion about that, but their motion specifically said upon council approval, so I wanted to run it by you all. Typically, those funds are used for things such as promotional items, but they were interested in purchasing a membership to the Bike League, which is an organization that actually hosts the program that does bicycle-friendly communities. It's $50 per year, or $100 for two years. And some of the benefits of it include, like, free event advertising for bicyclist events, resource libraries, quarterly webinars, and it basically supports organizations that advocates for bicycling. And they just wanted to make sure you all approved, expending the funds in that manner, as opposed to purchasing promotional items.
Good. Vice Mayor, I don't know enough about it. I mean, I'm not opposed to it. If you're in favor of it, I don't know if the city manager has been, had an opportunity to enter the discussion?
I have not reviewed this, the league or anything, but I...
Would you be willing to talk to the city manager, as long as you, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know about the others, but if you two are both in favor of it, I don't see no objections to it.
I agree.
I agree.
Is that okay with you? I think you ought to get a chance to chime in on it.
Of course.
If that's okay with you.
Sure.
Okay, very good. Other new business, board reports? Council member Chambers?
An update on the art projects. A little bit later, city manager is going to go over some locations the city has for the street mural. But the hall project, this Friday, we are going to hang art in the hallway. And it's a, it's a project, it's not the real project with artists from the community, it is just a trial with artwork that the arts council members, and asking anybody on the city staff if they have a piece of artwork they want to submit. Mainly to learn how the system works, to hang it up, make sure it's going to work before we risk other people's art. But it'll be up there for the month or two until we start getting the artists working.
Good.
So that's this Friday.
Very good, thank you. Other new business, board reports? I'd just like to take this opportunity to commend our staff for the hurricane operations over the weekend. It was, actually, the weekend makes it good in some ways and more challenging in others. So it was done very, very well. We luckily escaped most damage, and then we had some trees down and so forth. But these things affect people that don't, you don't realize it. We always look at the public works, which obviously has a huge part of it, but there's a whole lot going on behind the scenes with finance and with, you know, the fire department and the police, and so there's, and legal, and so there's a lot of pieces going on behind the scenes that people don't often think about. And so it really involves, probably not all of our staff, but a good portion of it is involved in this in one way or the other. And so I'd also like to acknowledge Mr. Nazario, who got randomly chosen to be acting city manager before the, before the storm came along, and then all of a sudden found himself in the driver's seat during the hurricane preparation, so. But I also know that, you know, besides your great leadership, that you've got a great team around you. And so thank you all for everything that you've done, and I know that it's, it's an exercise, it's, it's like doing a lot of things. It looks easy from the outside, but when you're on the inside, you realize there's 100 things going on, and they're all going on at 100 miles an hour, so. So thank you all for that. And that's all I have, unless somebody has something different? If, we'll move on to city managers' report.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those kind words, and I was about to say the same thing, as this was Tony's trial by fire, I think he passed, and thank you to the whole team. Everybody did an exceptional job, and I appreciated the time off, so, thank you. So in your backup this evening, you have several items. You have three reports on the FY '24 third quarter. The first is on the council's fiscal year priorities, followed by the budget goals, as well as a third report on the ARPA and capital projects. If anyone has any questions on any of those reports, be willing to, happy to take those now, or have some of our staff address those.
Any questions?
I just have one.
Yes, councilman.
Just because, just to announce to everybody that where we are with the ARPA projects, everything is on schedule to be completed within the deadlines required.
Yes, yes, that is the case right now, where it's, we'd love to have more time, but right now, we're on schedule.
The only thing, I have a comment on it, and that is, we, I think you and I talked on the phone about this. Every time we get these reports, I mean, I know what's going on, I know about all these projects, I know all these things that are going on, but I don't often see them all in one spot. And when I read these quarterly reports from A to Z, I'm like, oh, my gosh. We really do have a lot going on. I know I run around the city saying how much we have going on, but when I see this quarterly report broken down by department and everything that we truly do have going on, it's amazing that you guys can keep up with this. And so, again, thank you to you for your organization, and thank you guys again for all that you're doing. You're not just doing your job, we're not just keeping the lights on here, we are really moving this place forward, and so thank you for that, so.
Thank you. The next item I have is the, as council member Chambers was mentioning earlier, we were tasked with looking at some locations for street art, and when we embarked on this endeavor, we had several conditions. First of all, we're trying to find locations where the pavement was in good shape, because the last thing you want is to put, you know, investment of time on the community's part to paint an intersection to only find... to paint an intersection to only find out a year later that you're going to repave. We were also looking for locations that would be in highly visible areas where you'd have a fair amount of the community seeing these, these pieces of art. And then we were also trying to find, this was based on some input from the council, trying to find locations that might have been west of 56th Street or south of Bullard, which are sort of like the more, the less traditional areas where a lot of the already existing art is located. So in doing that, we had about nine locations that we had feedback from council members, feedback from staff, and we applied those factors to those locations, and we came up with a short list of four. These are just suggestions at this point. Obviously, the council may want us to look at different ones, and we'd be happy to do that. But the ones we have right now are White Way at 53rd, Serena at 52nd, Serena at 53rd, and Mission Hills at 53rd. And that's the list that we'd like you to consider. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I do have a question.
Councilmember Fernandez.
How many locations, that's a list of four, but how many would we actually install art at?
Right. That might be a question for the council.
Right now, the money left over for this year's budget will be one, but next year's a new budget year.
So we would want to suggest one out of the four on the list?
Yes, yes, yes. And I know earlier, the Arts Council floated White Way and Gillette, which the city's work, which was very well done, shows that's really not the perfect idea. I have not floated any of these locations by the Arts Council yet because this is really a city project. They're just kind of the, we'll make it happen when we pick something. And how you want to pick one of the four, or rank them, or whatever. Personally, when I worked for the city, I know we always tried to do something on, for the west side, and that's what we called it, the west side of 56, and all this does that. So, and these are all entrances from the west side into our city that will make a good impact. So I don't really, me personally, I don't really have one over the other, but I don't know how we want to handle the rest of picking one of the four.
Vice Mayor Abel.
Wait, one other thing before that. I want to thank the city again, and it seemed like you really got some input, good input put from your staff, how they kind of bought into some of this project, too, and I really liked that. Thank you very much. And out there, if you had comments, thank you very much.
Actually, hold on just a second, I want to make sure you were finished. Councilmember, you still have the floor, Councilmember Fernandez.
No, 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 I just wanted to make sure the, what we were actually going to be, you know, one, are we four, three, two, you know, however many.
I just want to make sure you were done before I called somebody else. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Chambers had just said something about he wasn't sure, like, how to proceed about which one to select. And personally, I haven't had a chance to do a drive-by of these locations, so I would want to make sure I could go look at each of them before we decide, whenever that may be.
So I mean, I feel actually the same way, because, you know, so maybe we could bring it up in your report the next meeting or a chance to do that, you know?
Well, let's, let's give, so let's give, if the council's agreeable, let's give Mr. Beatty at least some feedback on the potential for these four. Are these four, we're going to select then the first one from one of these four, so we're on the right track with these four?
I am personally good with the four.
Yes, yes.
Okay. I like the fact that there, there's a public park.
Yes.
There are two of them, I think, that it'd be an opportunity to see more, just not just, not just driving over it, but so the people who will go to the park will, will be able to enjoy the visual aspect of it. But I think it should be an agenda item so that the public has an opportunity to express their opinion on it.
I guess I'm just trying to follow. So we're with the four. Are, is the council, are you individually, you're going to go by and?
I think what the council's asking is that we approve the selection of these four sites as the finalists, right? One of these four will be the first site. But I think the council would like it to be on a future agenda to select the one site as being the first one. And I think part of the reason I've heard was that that would provide the opportunity for public comment to, for people to, if they have any preference. Also gives us a chance to go, to drive by if we want to and go look. I would like to say, I'd like the idea of doing some on the west side or west of 56th Street. I hope we don't do the first four on the west side of 56th Street. I'd like to find someplace that's close to where we congregate, where we gather people, whether that's near the rec center for the fall, you know, we'd have festivals there, we have stuff near Woodmont Park, we have stuff, you know, the places where we bring a lot of people, particularly if it's fireworks on 4th of July, we'd bring thousands of people into the city for that. Be nice to have it something. It doesn't have to be the first one, but I noticed some of the-
Well, it still, it still could be, I mean.
No, 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 I think the west side is good for the, but there's some that look like they might not be suitable right now, but they may be in short, in a short period of time. You know, Druid Hills in Brecker, we're going to do a big stormwater project there, but that's coming quick. I mean, pretty soon, that'll all be brand-new pavement, so that's kind of in the core of the city.
We do need to get the first one done.
I don't know what the timetable is for repaving White Way and Gillette. I know we've done some repaving in that area already. That's, that would be a really good, anyway, the first one would be one of these four, and then we'll go from there. Is that good work for you? Okay.
Okay. So moving on, the last item is, I'd like to suggest that if the council would be amenable to scheduling an executive session for the purposes of reviewing labor union negotiations with the fire union, looking potentially to do it on Tuesday, August 13th at 3:00.
Vice Mayor.
It works for me.
Councilmember Shurkey, it works for me, work for you, work for you. Okay, if it works for everybody, is there a motion to that effect?
Move to, move to schedule a-
Executive session.
Executive session for 3:00 on the August 13th, for the purposes discussed in the contract.
Second.
This motion of the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays, and we'll meet then.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. City Attorney's report.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, council, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Any other business? Directors, anything we forgot? You want to talk about Tony?
Uh-oh, now you did it.
I just wanted to also thank the directors and also Jeannie for their assistance. They took what have, what probably would have been a chaotic situation and really turned it into a guided process for me to follow. So thanks for lending your expertise, it really helped, and I appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, okay, if there's nothing else, we will be adjourned. Book fell apart. I don't usually look that far back in the book, it all came-